All the meeting to order, it's Tuesday, April 27th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Start with roll call to the left with Mike Warrington. I'm sorry, Councilman Warrington. Mike Warrington, council member.
Homer, council member.
Dr. Joseph Ford, council member.
Shelby Carcellary, council member.
Ronnie Price, mayor.
Troy Taber, city council president.
Tim Berry, council member. This time, we're going to ask Pastor Daniel Ivy with Anchor Baptist Church to come and do the invocation for us.
Near orders, we couldn't be in prayer tonight, we are thankful for this time to gather together to do business. I pray that you would just grant wisdom tonight, that you would help all of the things that need to be addressed to be addressed properly. I pray that you just guide and direct in the proceedings, we just ask all these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, sir. I stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this time, we'll open up for a public forum. If you'd like to say something, state your name, your address, and keep it short. Nobody? Public forum's closed. Acceptance of agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd move to accept the agenda as presented.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. At this time, I have a couple of proclamations. Seven one, Public Service Recognition Week. And I'll need to put my eyes on. Whereas the city of Andover is served daily by public servants on both the local and county level who are willing to serve the community they love, these unsung heroes do the work that keeps our city and county working. And whereas the public employees take not only job but oath and whereas the public servants in administrative roles included but not limited to city administrators, city clerks, court clerks, chief financial officers, city engineers, and their countless support staff power our local and county governments from behind the scenes and are committed to tackling the toughest challenges. And whereas the public works professionals maintain public streets, parks, and utilities for the community. And whereas many public servants, including military personnel, police officers, firefighters, and EMT personnel, risk their lives each day in service to the people of the city of Andover and Butler County. And whereas the public servants include teachers, nurses, safety inspectors, social workers, and countless other occupants occupations who day in and day out provide the diverse services demanded by the citizens and their government with efficiency and integrity. And whereas without public servants at every level continually would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. Therefore, in recognition of their service, I hereby call upon the city, the citizens of Andover, to recognize with appreciation proclamation Public Service Recognition, I'm sorry, Public Service Recognition Week, May 2nd through May 8th, 2021. Be it resolved by Mayor Ronnie Price with the concurrence of the city council assembled in regular sessions this 27th day of April, 2021. Seven two, National Police Memorial Week. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as a Peace Officer Memorial Day and the week in which the May 15th falls as National Police Week. And whereas the members of the Andover Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the city of Andover. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their police department. And that the members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas the men and women of the Andover Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service, therefore, as mayor of the city of Andover, I call upon the citizens, all the citizens of the city of Andover, and upon all the patriotic civic and educational organizations to be observed this week of Sunday, May 9th through Saturday, May 15th, 2021, as Police Week with appropriate ceremonies and observations in which all of our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities and in doing so have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. And I further call upon all citizens of Andover to observe Friday, May 15th, as Peace Officer Memorial Day. In honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community and become disabled in performance of duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of the fallen heroes and hereby proclaim, May 15th, 2020, 2021, Peace Officer Memorial Day, May 10th, May 16th, 2021, National Police Week, be it resolved by Mayor Ronnie Price with the concurrence of city council assembled in regular session on this 27th day of April, 2021. And just for me, I sincerely, and y'all know how I feel about you, firefighters, policemen, the guys out on the streets, working our streets, the city workers, I have the utmost respect for all of you, and y'all know that. And for city staff, thank you for getting us through this last year, I appreciate it. Thank you very much. All right. Onward and upward. Presentations. Sorry, I just had a thought in my head, and I'm going to keep it there. Eight one, municipal golf course, first quarter report. And Randy is going to, Randy Hunt is going to talk to us about that. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, gentlemen. Good evening. How's everyone doing? This report covers the first quarter, which is January through March. The materials were submitted to you, and I'm sure you've read them, so I won't go word for word what they said, just a brief summary. I think if I had to pick one word, it's weather. And yet, in this industry, that's kind of a given in the transition zone where we live. There were 33 days in the months of January and February where we had, was not playable, and that's about the standard, 50% of the time, we just, and it's all based on weather. So no surprises there. We have instituted a new price structure for 2021. Included in that price structure is a $1 discount to Andover residents off their green fee when they identify themselves as Andover residents. So far, since we instituted that on March 15th, we've had 82 residents take advantage of that. As with last year, kids play free, those 12 and 100, when accompanied by an adult, play free. The number of rounds played for the month or for the quarter are down slightly from budget. They're also down slightly from the previous year, I mean, from, from, lost my train of thought. I was thinking what you were thinking, and you didn't say it, so I won't say it, Mr. Mayor. Just a brief comment about April to date. On the 5th, we hosted the Andover High School Junior Varsity Golf Tournament. 10 teams, 10 schools participated with 55 golfers in a shotgun start. On the 12th of April, we aerified the greens, a core aeration, and aerified and top dressed. That is either a semi-annual or a biannual process that takes place. They are in the process of healing, not quite as quickly as we wanted right now, simply because the weather hasn't cooperated. We need some warmth, but nonetheless, that is complete. Our leagues have begun, the senior league, which plays on Thursdays, has probably been playing about three weeks now, and the ladies league, which starts on Tuesdays, started this, actually, this morning, we had players there then. Rounds for the month of April so far are down about 13%, again, 100% weather-related. And when we say weather, we're talking about temperature, we're talking about moisture, and we're talking about wind. We all live in it, playing golf, and it's a different deal. And so 35 from the south or 40 from the north makes a little bit difference as whether or not people would like to play golf. Sunshine helps as well. Farther into the year, I will say, in collaboration with the Parks and Recreation Department, we have two tournaments scheduled right now. May 22nd, we're going to have a two-person scramble. Details will be coming out soon. And then October 2nd, in conjunction with Andover Days, we'll also have an event, the format to be determined yet. On May 11th, I'm going to meet with the Green Valley Homes Association and talk about what we can best do for the golf course and everything there. And we'll also have our website up and flying here in May. I did want to point out, just maybe for clarification purposes, on annual pass sales and how that thing works, our annual pass is run basically from March 1 through February 28. We do not prorate. If you buy it farther into the year, we don't promote or discount that fee. So the majority of our annual passes typically are sold March and April. We define it in two ways, I guess. First of all would be households, how many households purchased an annual pass, but then how many humans in that household? Because we have, you know, there could be families of five and whatever else, but yes, just one annual pass that's purchased that incorporates various numbers of humans. So, for example, in March in 2020, we had 30 households that encompassed 34 humans. In March of 2021, we've sold 27 households with 34 humans. April through yesterday, we have, in 2020, we sold five more households that added another 12 humans. This year, we've sold 10, and it's added another 13 humans. At the end of the day, last year, to this point, we had sold 35 households, this year we've sold 37. Humans, we had 46 that were participating last year, we have 47 this year, which is pretty well standard. And as a, the year, full year last year, we sold 49 households that took in, comprised 62 humans that participated. So that's just, hopefully, an informative thing about how the annual passes work. That's all I have for now, I'm more than happy to entertain questions and do my best to answer them.
Good evening, Randy. In regards to the other Oak Golf managed courses, where do we fall? I mean, as far as membership and rounds and that kind of thing?
This is the only daily fee or course that's open to the public. The other three properties are member-owned country clubs, and it's, while it's the same industry, it's really a different animal. That's all membership-based and member-owned, if you will.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. You're down about 24 individual members. Do you think you will get those back here in the next month, when they're renewing?
You mean from March to year-end last year?
Yes.
Yes, I fully, again, through April, we are basically right on where we were last year, and I would anticipate that we would meet, if not exceed, what we did last year.
Okay.
That's my expectation, absolutely. Again, the weather impacts that. Also, availability of funds for people, tax season, April 15th, excuse me, May 17th for the CPAs in the room or whatever, yeah, but we're on track.
So you say you are meeting with HOA members, is that what you said?
We're having, there is, I believe there's like six homes associations in the Green Valley area. I've been invited to one, but I can't tell you what number it is on May 11th, I'll be sitting down or we'll be chatting with them.
Is the purpose to try to raise membership, or did they just invite you to?
You know, I've just been given an invitation, and I haven't seen the agenda yet.
Okay. We could all agree, though, that it's been windy enough to mess up my hair, it's too hard to play golf, right?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question. How many volunteers came out and helped you guys aerate and work the greens?
I want to say, I don't have the exact number because I was not here, but I'm thinking it was like between eight and 10.
Were you shocked about that, that people just came out and helped, or were you impressed? Were you, what was your thoughts?
Always pleased, always pleased. Also, when they bring their own golf carts, their own, you know, whatever else to help out, I guess I shouldn't say that I'm totally surprised because in the communities that I've had the good fortune of working in, that's been a common practice when, you know, when things need to be done.
Okay, thank you.
If not, thank you for your time tonight. I will see you in the end of the second quarter, and who's ever in charge of the sunshine? Thank you.
Thank you, Randy, appreciate it. Keep up the work. All right, consent agenda, nine through nine 10.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the consent agenda items 9.1 through 9.10 as presented.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries six zero. At this time, we're going to do 10-1, I'm going to step away from the bench and hand the gavel over to the president of the council, Troy Taber, and he will take care of the
The item.
North Heritage Park item, thank you.
Can I have a gavel, please? No, I'm kidding.
If you don't hit me with it.
All right. We're going to do item 10.1 tonight, which is a bid award for the Heritage North Park. I think Jason's going to come up and talk for us, give us an explanation of what's going on.
All right, well, good evening. We did submit or advertise the project that you approved us to, to three bidders. We actually talked to four. If you've read the letter of recommendation that is in the package, you'll notice that we only had one bidder respond. During the course of last week, I heard from the other two, and they just said, "We're simply too busy to try to squeeze this in." While that was disappointing, it's not surprising, given our, you know, landscape folks, I don't know if any of you have ever hired any of them, but they're always very busy this time of year. That said, I do believe that we have a fair, we received a fair price. There's our estimate in there as well for your comparison, it's a little bit under. The developers, I'd like to add, are just, obviously, they're anxious because this linear park, this being the first portion of it, is a pretty key fundamental aspect of the heritage. And we think it's going to be kind of the jewel, if you will, that really grabs people's attention, kind of icing on the cake. So they've asked me to just ask you all for your consideration in approving this. It's, I know it's not a desire to only receive one bid, but given the timing and stuff, they would just request that you give that consideration on behalf of trying to keep the project momentum moving. If there's any questions, I'll gladly try to answer those for you.
President.
Go ahead.
Did you give your engineer's estimate to the city prior to the bid?
No, they don't have it sometime, I don't know, we, I don't know how often I do that. It's a little unusual, I might add, the TIF projects, and the fact that typically, we already know what that is because of petition, like our typical city projects, the petitions are already done well beforehand. And so with the TIF, it's a little different here because we've got, we have multiple phases that we've done. And so I would just say the housekeeping on those is a little different than the other way. However, I can assure you that we have a budget that we're tracking out of this first three-point-whatever-million dollars. And we had 41,000, almost 42,000 in kind of savings on the projects that have bid to date, I can share that with you. We further, it's been a while since we've talked to the city about it, but they will recall, staff will recall that as we've been working through this with you, Legacy Street from Heritage, which is kind of the north-south, and I can point if you wish, but that entire stretch of street where the new proposed multi-story mixed-use building is, all the way to Yorktown, that is no longer going to be built. So that accounts for like 250-something thousand of construction dollars. So that's, those are dollars that aren't used, let's see. And then a portion of, a portion we agreed in 2019, now this is going to change as we come before you again with the TIF. If we get where we are hoping to with that, we have to go back in, and we've prepared a booklet that's been delivered before you voted a month or two ago, and it shows all these costs broken out for the entire TIF that it wants to be pursued. So I would just say regarding that, that we'll work with staff to accommodate whatever checks and balance if we need to along the way, but I can assure you there are dollars in the current project budget.
I just am disappointed that there's only one bidder who actually bid on this, and I mean, we were pretty adamant that we wanted to see the three bidders, and that was, you know, kind of our, so what we agreed on. Otherwise, we could have opened it up to other people and had, you know, five or six people bid on it. But these were the three people that y'all chose that said that was going to bid on it. And then the premier just happens to be just right underneath y'all's estimate, it makes it look a little fishy. So I'm not saying it is, but it, that's not what we wanted to see.
I completely understand. I, it's obviously your prerogative, and while we would, speaking on behalf of the developer, they would be disappointed to start over, they understand your prerogative on this. My gut feel tells me it won't be much different, but I could be wrong, you know, we didn't bid it to any larger group. I would just want to stress again what we talked about, how we got to where we did with this project and with Yorktown Parkway. With my experience of 24 years or whatever I've been doing this, it will be very difficult for staff and us on behalf of working for staff on the inspection side, in my opinion, this is just my opinion, to get the project to meet the specification and construction documents as we put them together, just based on our historical work in the industry, with landscape in particular. It's just kind of the nature of the beast. I wish to tell you it was different, I think there's some circumstances that have caused that, but I still believe that that's a valid point. Once again, that's my opinion, but I think I, from experience, would be able to prove that if I had more time.
Well, I know I've been probably one of the biggest fans of pushing this and the whole project, you know, the heritage project, and I think it will be a great project, but I just don't like how this is presented to us tonight.
Completely understand. I don't have, I can't speak for the bidders, other than they told me that they were just busy with other work, and they just felt that they couldn't fit it in, so they backed out on us.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Sorry.
I'm done.
Jason, I do have, or Mr. Gish, I do have a question in regards to, you said something about the Legacy North to Douglas is not going to be developed?
Susan, can you give him a pointer?
Yes, certainly. So, okay, I'm pointing at the left screen here, so this segment of street here is going away. About a year ago.
Okay, just the streets going away, not that section, okay, thank you.
Yeah, so the construction dollars that were in the 2019 TIF, I call it 2019, Phase One, within that, that piece there is not going to be built, so anyways, because of the mixed-use building that's on this, what's going to be known as Lot One, Block Three, Heritage Mixed Use. And then because that's not there, there's no need for that segment there as well.
Thank you, Jason. Does anyone else on the council have any questions?
I do, Mr. President.
Go ahead, Tim.
Lance, have you had a chance to look this estimate over?
The estimate that was included in your new package has been revised, so to answer the original question about if we've seen an estimate for this project, yes. And what Jason was alluding to is all the TIF, all the improvements scheduled to be funded with the TIF were included in the petition and project plans that were approved. So I think in that document, the North Greenway or North Park improvements actually had a construction cost at that point of 700 and some thousand dollars with a healthy contingency, which has been refined as part of this actual bidding process. So yes, we've seen an estimate for this project.
Jason, when we had talked before, I believe we kind of talked about a one-year, like if something went wrong, anything would be replaced with that, but we had asked perhaps to, if we could get two or three, or was that ever brought up as part of this?
As far as like how the warranty of the?
Yeah, the warranty.
Yeah, so, so the warranty in the specifications, there's a one-year guarantee on the plantings and things like that. One of the complications of any kind of landscape project is who's going to take care of it. On this, the developer is, I think we're still sorting out some finite details of kind of the agreement of exactly what happens here with the maintenance, but the maintenance will be implemented about 60 days after the project is finalized, that's when kind of the countdown begins, you'll have substantial completion, then we'll go to final completion, and then that kind of click kicks the clock or turns it on for that full year of landscaping. We in the specifications try to specify or encourage that landscaper to be paying attention to what's occurring on the project as it's maintained during that period, so that it's not just finger pointing at the end of the period. It generally works out pretty good, and it works out even better when we have someone that we believe has been accountable in the past for replacements. So I don't know if I answered that exactly the way.
Yeah, warranty was the word that was alluding me. And then- And then, did you determine and trying to figure out who's ultimately responsible, and I think we talked about it before, but it is, the HOA will be in charge of, or who will be in charge of replacing stuff two years from now, three years from now?
So the, the way that the agreement, I mean, there's, I think we're still trying to work on getting there, so it's not done. But it's being reviewed, I understand what the developer's asking, and this may not be agreeable, but what the developer's asking is, they would like to maintain the turf, the, they'll need to operate, to be able to operate the irrigation, they'll need to be able to clean up the beds, just make them look good, some maintenance like that, every annual cleanup in the spring or late winter. But the details of, you know, if that's agreeable exactly, it's still under consideration. So I don't know that I can fully answer, but that's what's the developer's asking.
Okay. Well, it sounds like the developer's asking to maintain a portion of it, but perhaps not all of it. I mean, could you tell me what they were gonna say? What were they not gonna cover?
Well, if I understand their perspective correctly, what they're asking is, it's a public park for the benefit of all citizens. So because it is a public park, they don't want to be responsible for things like light poles and the electrical system, the sidewalks, things of that nature. What they really want to fine-tune their, their contribution and control of trying to do, because we had discussions early on that the way the public parks are taken care of in the city right now aren't necessarily going to achieve what the developer's idea is. And so they said, hey, we'd like to have this residential, I shouldn't speak for all the developers, but the residential developer in this piece would be part of that agreement. They're asking to be able to maintain kind of above and beyond what the city would normally provide with lawn mowing and that. So that's the real basic side of it.
So they want to, oh, I'm sorry. Mr. President?
Go ahead.
So the developers want to mow it then?
They want to be able to maintain the manicured look and feel of the park.
Which saves us a lot of money with our Parks Department not happening to mow it, maintain that.
Now, some of the details, I'm going to go off in the weeds, but I just want to make sure that, to be fair, they're asking, I don't know if this is agreeable, I'm just reporting the news, I'm the middle guy, okay? But they're asking for consideration of some costs, I think, that the city would typically have to take care of that. I'm not thinking, you know, I'm not sure that's even agreeable. Jennifer says, Mrs. Gosden says no. So I'm just here reporting, I'm kind of the fly on the wall between everyone, so, but that's some of, I think, the things that have to be hammered out.
And this is a unique situation. Currently, public parks, we maintain. So this is a new ground for us to go through. I think some of the concerns we have is, if we are not going to be in charge of maintaining flowerbeds and shrubs, I don't believe we should be responsible to replace shrubs or flowers that die. So that's like a little nuance that we need to work through with the developer to say who's responsible when these things do happen. If we're responsible for maintaining it, I think that makes sense. But if we're not, then I think that that needs to rest with who's maintaining that particular thing. I don't think anyone in Public Works had any surprise that we would be responsible for the sidewalks and trash, things like that. That's just part of maintaining the parks.
Who on our staff is negotiating this aspect of it?
Lance and I are working on this, and we are in close conversation with Rick, because this, like I said, this is all new. This is a totally different relation. I mean, we typically maintain all the parks, so this is new to outsource any part of that.
So in all the parks that we obviously put in everything, we maintain them all, obviously, but we don't put in beautiful flowers and excessive amount of trees and that kind of stuff?
Right, not to the extent that they're requesting, that's correct. And I think it is true, we would probably have to hire somebody to keep up what they're asking to keep up in this park. We do not maintain flowerbeds. We don't put daily attention on the flowerbeds that we maintain for the city. That's pretty heavy, intensive labor.
Okay.
Mr. President, I do have a quick question. So in sixty days, I guess when this is complete, who's gonna be mowing the sod at the end of July?
When the project is final, it would be the developer's responsibility if that pans out like we're talking.
Okay.
I don't think we're so far away, we're not gonna be able to get this maintenance agreement worked out. We are actively working towards bringing you a maintenance agreement here in the next one, two, or three meetings.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
So Jason, I mean, I think you guys know I wasn't a big fan of just sending it out to the fore and not doing a competitive bid. So I mean, I'm really hesitant on having one bid, because at the end of the day, you know, I think we have to say, through whether it's putting out the, you know, request for bids, or, because I mean, MKEC, MKEC at the end of the day is managing the project, right? So if something's not done correctly, you would say, hey, this needs to be redone, right?
Yeah, so we currently have in that approved budget, construction administration, and our responsibility is to help with the staking and daily observation of activity during construction.
So I just have a hard time with us not opening the competitive bid. If you're already gonna be managing those things, you know, why didn't we do this a month ago? Because then a month ago, it was, we needed to have some urgency, and now we're down to, okay, now we've got one bid. That's just exactly what I thought was gonna happen when we had this, you know, this talk a month ago. Is there any representatives from the developers here tonight?
I do not see any, no sir.
Okay. And is there a reason the mayor's not back here?
Potential conflict of interest.
Okay.
Does anybody else have any questions, thoughts? Would anyone want to entertain a motion on the council then?
Mr. President, I move that we accept the low bid from Premier Landscape, Inc., Andover, Kansas, for the construction of the Heritage Edition North Park Part C in the not-to-exceed amount of $562,916, and authorize the mayor to sign the contract.
Do I have a second? I'll second the motion then. Any further discussion?
I would say, Mr. President, it seems like we're all just upset with just the one bid, Jason. I'm looking at the pricing and my knowledge of, you know, of landscape items, I don't know anything about electrical or anything like that, but the landscape items, it looks right, it looks fair, it looks close. I mean, it looks, you know, what other landscape projects I've been in part of, so that looks right. But I think it seems like everybody else on the council is very frustrated with just the one, one bid, so.
Yes, we share your frustration.
And I think it's a concern that this is gonna continue to happen. If we continue to say, yes, we'll let you guys do it yourself, yes, we'll let you guys make those decisions, and that, that I think is gonna become, we don't want that to become a habit, because then it's kind of, it's kind of just not a lot of transparency for us.
Could you tell me the process if we were to vote this down today, of what the next steps are and how long that would take and potentially push back the project?
Well, typically, it will take, if you were to approve, the scenario would work out that a notice of award would be issued that would direct the contractor to go get the rest of his bonding things in place and be working on that for the contract. That would get submitted back to the city. They would go through the legal review of that. Once that all looks correct, then the mayor would be told that he could sign that. And then we, we basically would then from that be able to set, you know, during this whole process, we'd be trying to set a time to have a notice to proceed date, and it's usually about the date that the contract gets signed is what we've been doing in the past. And then that would, so that might be a three-week period.
And I think your question, Troy, is how much does this push this back? And so...
Yeah, my question really is if it's voted down today and you have to go back out for bids, how much, how long would that push it back?
Yeah, I think there's a lot of variables here. I don't want to, there's a lot of things that can happen. But we're getting kind of to the point, not any fault of yours, to where, you can do any landscape anytime of year. However, it gets more and more difficult the later it gets through the summer. I mean, it just, it's very stressful on the plan material, so the sooner some of that stuff gets done, the better, but...
Could you be back to us in two weeks with new bids, is my real question, right? Or four weeks, or what's the answer to that?
My gut feel tells me, you know, the best we could do is have to look at your calendar, but, you know, we literally have to go back out like tomorrow in order to get bids in time for your next upcoming meeting, or maybe it'd even be better to be the next one after that. So somewhere between a two- to four-week delay.
And then how do you vet the other bidders to make sure they can do what these bidders can?
It's challenging. There's things that you can put in the specification that would say, how many of this type of irrigation system have you done? It's really tough to get that out of people. I mean, it's very difficult. So we like to honor the low bid, and so it's, my experience, it's difficult to put those constraints that they can be in there, but it's, it's very difficult to vet those things out.
Troy, you can do that. What it also does, it makes the apparent a little bitter more when they bid again, they're probably on a bid lower.
I mean, looking at this and seeing what effort was put in to begin, and obviously I didn't exactly agree with what you guys had proposed before, I have a problem with it. I don't mind, I guess, if I'm gonna vote it, but I would obviously point out that based on the sentiment that you're seeing here, that this, even if it was approved with this piece of the project, it probably can't happen again. So you're gonna have to probably not come back to us with a bid with a single bidder from now on, right? If it even passes tonight, right? So...
Correct.
Mr. President?
Can I? May I?
Go ahead, Shelby.
Yeah, I do, just as a statement, I do wish somebody from the developers were here, because this is, this is a trust issue for us. This was a moment for us to make sure that the work is being put in there, so that we can kind of see everything that's going into it and make sure that that's happening on the back end. So it's really difficult. I don't think anybody wants to stall the project a month or so. That's certainly, I don't think, the intent of anybody here, but it's really, it is difficult in, to know that this could be a, become a habit throughout this very long project that we're gonna have.
To be, if I may, to be critical of myself and our team, what I will go try to do better is, we have kind of a forecast now of trying to hit the next set of projects, and what we will try to do in retrospect of this and what's happened, is have the project plans ready at a point in time late this year, or sometime during the winter, so that there's more opportunity for these folks to fit this in their schedule. If you can imagine you're a landscape company, this is a pretty big project, I'd say, in a lot of respects. So those guys, those companies all live on consistency as best as possible, and so adding this into their workload, there's only, you know, there's a handful that can do that. So we may need to strategize with staff, and maybe you guys can talk about in workshops, and we could try to come up with some things, but it, there's just challenges here in our area to do projects like this.
Homer, do you have?
Yeah, yes. Thank you, Mr. President. I guess, you know, more like Shelby as a statement, you know, you've already known my feeling on this. Tim, I do appreciate you saying something about the fact that some of your expertise outside of this is landscaping, if you will, in a general sense. And so I appreciate your advice on that. My other, I guess, point is that this is also an Andover, Kansas company, and so those are my two things that are weighing heavy on, you know, on my vote tonight in regards to this project. But again, you know, we're always, we're not always gonna be able to say it's whether it's this, it's that. And, you know, I know there's terminology out there with having something shovel-ready, you know, when you're talking about a plan in place, and maybe MKEC, you know, whoever it is that's in charge of that, needs to say, hey, these plans are ready, so that we can then definitely plan for it in the future. I mean, I'll be honest with you, I really hate, you know, the predicament that we're in now, and it's weighing heavy on me. I'll just be honest with you, Jason.
Yeah, it's fair criticism.
Dr. Ford?
I think Homer did a good job. I just, I just don't like that it's laying on our laps to be the bad guy at this point, because you didn't prepare yourselves like you promised. It really makes us look bad when we say no. And, you know, I understand you guys have been hustling to get, you know, get your houses ready for, you know, Spring Parade of Homes. I don't know if that's pushed your attention away from this, but there's definitely not focus, that's for sure, and that shows. So I'd like to see it happen a little bit more cleanly in the future.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Mr. President, I will say, I've seen Premier Landscape's work. I've never hired them myself, but I've seen their work, and I've had others who have hired them before, and they've done phenomenal work. So I guess, take that as you will. And they are local, like Homer said.
All right. Well, at this point, we have a motion and a second. So I'm gonna ask you to raise your hand. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, raise your hand. Motion carries. Thank you very much, Jason.
Yeah, thanks for your patience.
How's that pressure? Nothing? Good pressure?
I'm the middle guy, so I just bring bad news and give good news, and...
All right.
Thank you, though.
Thank you.
Can I ask, since Jason's still here, I don't know, Mr. President, or...
Sure, go ahead, Jason.
This is about Yorktown. How is that coming?
So Yorktown, in my opinion, Rick and I have talked about this, it's rather slow.
Okay.
And that said, I've, I'd have, I did leave a message for the premier this afternoon, and I am, I'm sure that Will and I will talk tomorrow, Will Stulzatz, and we're trying to encourage, you know, where are we at in the schedule? I've heard from, we did get all the shop drawings, I will tell you that they were very orderly on the shop drawings and really got those in right away. So the fabrication of things like the archway, all the metalwork, that is underway. So those things are positive. I know the masonry components are ordered. I know the quarry block benches and things like that are all being fabricated, so those things are good. The assembly, there's not much to show for that yet, so we're hoping that changes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Jennifer, do you think it would be appropriate to have the, Jason or whomever up on maybe a monthly basis to give us an update on the sales of the homes and such, so that we can have a sense for what's going on?
I feel like that's not in your wheelhouse, but if it is...
They all sorts of it.
Okay.
But we don't have to do it tonight, but I'm just saying, I think that everyone here is now concerned.
Well, what I was, I'm sorry, I wasn't clear what I meant. Perhaps we should have the realtors representing those developments come to give you those updates, because I don't, he does some great work with landscape design, but I don't think he's selling the houses. But maybe.
I hear all those things, so I might be able to repeat it with their permission.
But I'm sure they would love the opportunity to come and give you that update. The real estate agents have been really excited and eager in finding different ways to try to get involved in the Andover community. I'm sure April specifically has been out to City Hall several times. I'm sure they would be delighted to take you up on that offer.
That would be great. That would be great.
Could we get a, Jason, could we get a report? And I'm not for sure of the process here. So a report on the Yorktown project every couple of weeks or?
So we, we submit a weekly progress. It just kind of keeps track of it. It doesn't necessarily, so what we've asked the contractor for is give us your schedule. Tell us what we need to expect because, because we have to plan too on being there and being available to watch it. So then that way we could kind of have a metric of where are they supposed to be. So that's part of my conversation I want to have with the contractor and inquire.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Troy, I have one more comment.
Yeah.
It's, you can, it's just general. I do a lot of bids as well. And having one bid is always unacceptable. And most of the time, it's, it's thrown out because the owner wants to see multiple bids. Okay? And just because, I'm sure Premier's great, just because they're local, that doesn't mean, that doesn't give them any extra points by being local. You know, we've had local people who've bid on things that we've, that we have seen and they didn't get the low, I mean, they, they, they weren't awarded the bid. Okay? So, you know, I'm, I'm glad they're a local company and glad that they are the apparent little bidder. But they were only, the only bidder when we told them that we wanted to see three. So we, we said, we haven't said no to anything on this project. But when we had that special meeting on this for their request, they had three, three bids that they were going to have back to us. And we just gave in to that. So definitely don't want to see that again. So that's, uh, it's kind of disappointing.
Mr. President?
Yeah, go ahead, Homer.
Mike, to your point, I, I guess I thought I was kind of odd man out last time because I was the one that was wanting the competitive bid and was the only one that voted against these four companies. So then when it comes back to it's just one company, you know, I, I think we're kind of pigeonholed there. So I think we should have had it be competitive bid from the get go.
But that's what we didn't want to see because we may, I think that was in your mind, it was in the back of mine too, but they promised three, three bidders, promised. And only came up with one because we were afraid they were going to give it to, you know, somebody. So, and that's, that's, that's the appearance. I'm not saying it is, it happened, but it's the appearance that we didn't want to happen. And we definitely want this job, this project to go very well. I mean, it's, it's, it's to our advantage to go very well because it will benefit our, our city. But, and we can't, we can't just say, oh, this is just landscaping. Well, it's a half a million dollars of landscaping. So we, you know, in the future, it's gotta, it's gotta be, it's gotta, it can't look not legit.
Yep.
Thanks, Mike.
I guess I would only say one, one thing is if it did go out to a general bid to everyone, and we still only got one. What you just said is we shouldn't approve it. I don't agree with that. But outside of that, I definitely agree with everything.
No, I mean, you have the option of that. But with a general bid, I mean, I was at a bid today, there was 12 different bidders at it. So, I mean, people are still hungry for work.
Sure.
So now I drove to Kansas City for that and I wasn't local.
Did you get the word?
I can't say yet.
All right. Very good. All right. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Can I call the mayor back in now? I don't need to like make a motion for that, I'm assuming. So. We have a new mayor.
Well, things are going to change.
All right.
Mr. President, you go ahead and call the next item in the absence of the mayor and relinquish the chair when he arrives.
I will do that.
Here he is. Never mind. Here he is.
Moving on to item 11.1. Good.
All right. Where are we at?
11.1.
All right. I need to wait back up. All right, 11. Well, wait a minute. Where are we at?
11.
11.1. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, we've gotten front of you tonight, the financial services agreement with Piper Sandler. I believe we have Dustin AV on Zoom right now. Dustin, can you hear us? We're connecting right now with Dustin.
The wheel.
Dustin, are you there? Well, he's in the Twilight Zone.
Here we go.
Interesting. I lost my internet connection.
You lost your internet connection too? Okay.
Mine's downloading as well.
I will let you know that anytime that we go out to issue bonds, we do need to enter into a financial services agreement with the financial advisor that we will be utilizing. Dustin has been working this, as we've talked about many times tonight and previous meetings, the heritage is a long-term project. So Dustin's been involved in the project, in the TIF original plan and the financial analysis, as well as this most recent amended plan, and then the plan for phase two. So he has been an integral member of the team as we've worked through all of these different plans and moving forward. So I really can't imagine you would want to use any other financial advisor at this point. But we do enter into a new agreement every time before we go to issue bonds. You may recall, we're currently in the protest period. You all approved the plans for the TIF districts in, on March 30. JT, I'm looking to you, is that a 60-day protest period, if memory serves me? So our protest period will go until the end of May. So we will not be able to go out to bid until June for these bonds, but we do need to have the agreement in advance. And am I getting a no-go from AV on Dustin joining us? Or, so I don't really know that he has anything to add. Does anybody have any questions for me or your bond counsel is here tonight and could certainly answer any legal questions?
Does it? Oh, wait. Go ahead, Mayor.
I would just say it appears to be their standard form financial advisory agreement.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the Financial Advisory Service Agreement with Piper Sandler for matters related to issuance of Series A and B 2021 tax increment general obligation bonds.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero.
Mr. Mayor, the next number 12.1, I'd like to abstain from the conversation and the vote for this one.
All right, Lakeview Heights Neighborhood Improvement Plan, 12-1 Engineering Service Work Order.
Mr. Mayor?
Good morning, ma'am.
Earlier this year, you guys will remember, we, you adopted a resolution changing, revising our policy on special assessment financing for infrastructure improvements. Part of that conversation dealt with how substandard infrastructure in existing neighborhoods is financed, is funded. We revised those standards, the city's participation in those projects. And then also within that policy, it states that before the city actually does any improvements in a neighborhood with substandard infrastructure, so by substandard infrastructure, we're speaking of sand, gravel roads, or neighborhoods without public water, public sewer, or drainage improvements. So before the city would actually go in and do any of these improvements, we would complete neighborhood plans. So these neighborhood plans generally are supposed to serve a, kind of a comprehensive study for these particular neighborhoods to really see which types of improvements are recommended. Every neighborhood is different. There are all kinds of different existing conditions, as we say, whether, you know, from lot size width to existing right-of-way, all kinds of different things that are special to each neighborhood that can determine what the city would recommend improvements to actually look like. So we put this in the policy that before any improvements would be made, a neighborhood plan would be completed. So staff has been contacted by property owners in the Lakeview Heights neighborhood, who currently has unpaved or sand gravel roads. They are served by public sewer and public water. There is some questions about the drainage and, and the neighborhood as well. And drainage has a large impact on street surfacing, if you will. So staff has been working with professional engineering consultants, PEC has city engineer, on developing a scope of what these neighborhood plans look like. So I've detailed it in the memo for tonight and I'll briefly cover them. But essentially what this plan will do, it'll look at various planning principles. So it'll be, we'll look at how the neighborhood fits within our existing planning documents, our comprehensive plan, corridor studies, future land use maps, all of the things that we use on a daily basis. It will also, that planning services portion will also include the development of an online survey to distribute and actually gauge the interest of the neighborhood. And we'll also hold an open house to have a conversation with the neighborhood, with the property owners, to make sure that what they feel is important for, in terms of improvements are at least considered. In addition to the, to the planning side of these neighborhood plans, obviously that's going to entail a lot of civil engineering. So we will look at the existing conditions of all of the infrastructure that exists now. We will look at the future condition, what should be included. And then we'll also analyze the costs of those items and then assess how much those, those improvements will be assessed to property owners, how much the city is going to participate in, basically also taking a, a financial look at it. So with me tonight is Josh Golka with PEC as city engineer. If you have any questions for me or for Mr. Golka, we will definitely try to answer those.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question.
Go ahead, sir.
How many residents contacted you to have this done?
Oh, it's over the years, it's been a handful. So it's not been any one individual that's contacted staff.
If we do this, spend the money to get this survey done and they decide not to do anything, do we bill the residents or we just absorb this cost?
No, it'll be absorbed. And I think your question is good. So a lot of times, you know, we get contacted as staff about improvements such as this. And sometimes they go, most times, they don't go anywhere, right? So we spend a lot of time, a lot of resources developing these plans, running these estimates, doing the public engagement, nothing ever really comes from it. And then two years, three years go by and someone else moves into the neighborhood and asks us, and we start that process completely over. The idea behind these neighborhood plans is not only to inform the improvements, but it's also to keep these plans on the shelf. So let's say we do this plan, we know what needs to be improved as we go forward. The neighborhood's still, you know, there's not 51% of the property owners that support it. It goes nowhere. And then in two years, Rick gets a call, or whoever's, you know, gets that call, and we have the plan already and we just have to update the numbers. So it's really, we have a comprehensive development plan that looks at the entire city. These are mini comprehensive plans for neighborhoods that should last for a while. So it's an investment that the city's making. But even without a project, that investment has value to the staff and to the city.
So how many houses are in that neighborhood? Do you have any idea?
Oh, I don't, I don't have that information off the top of my head. I would guess maybe 40 lots-ish. Don't hold me to that. We can count.
Looks like Mike knows. 53? Close.
So in doing this process, we're going to ask 13,000 people to pave a road for around 40 homes or a part of it. Is that correct?
Well, I mean, that's the reason why we redid that policy, our special assessment policy earlier this year. Very robust, in my opinion, conversation about that. The policy currently states for paving projects, initially going into the project, it's a 50%, 50/50 cost share between the benefit district or the neighborhood and the city at large. To be further refined and determined at the conclusion of these neighborhood plans. But that's the starting point, is 50/50 by policy.
And that's up to the governing body.
Ultimately, the acceptance of a petition for an improvement is up to the governing body and you can vary from policy.
But again, we're asking 13,000 people to pay for, pave roads for 40 homes.
Right. Essentially, you would, the city at large portion is funded from generally sales tax dollars or general fund. One of the two sources, yes.
But Mr. Mayor does also add value to the city as well. So, I mean, I, I get where you're coming from.
So what do we, how do we prioritize them? Do we prioritize them by the two gravel roads hooked to Andover Road? Or where, where do we stop? That's my question. It's a slippery slope, is it not?
So we've, we've inventoried, so from a streets perspective, right? Because there are neighborhoods without water and without public sewer. From a streets perspective, I think last time we inventoried those, we have approximately 13 lane miles of unpaved streets. So we've engaged, I think, three neighborhoods over the past three years, four, and one project ended up actually becoming feasible. And a petition was signed in the Lafayette-Herman area north of the school district site. So we have, we are responding to citizen requests when we do these neighborhood plans. But we do, and we've had some conversations with staff, that we will strategically try to do at least one of these neighborhood plans each year. And I think there's four to six neighborhoods where this would fit. Because our, again, our goal is to have these neighborhood plans, a staff resources going forward as well.
One thing I would say, I, I don't live in a neighborhood without paved streets, but I do live in a neighborhood that would really like to have a sidewalk that connected them to Andover Road. Well, that conversation is really hard. Is it the chicken or the egg? How much are you going to charge me to put the sidewalk in? Because I want the sidewalk, until you tell me how much the sidewalk costs. So I think the value of these plans is you can have intelligent conversations with the neighbors because it's easy to say, I want my road paved, until you go, it's how much per month for how many years? Or that's all it costs? I would definitely want to do that. So I, I think that's very valuable because I think it's really difficult for Joe Citizen, who may not work at all in paving, to have any idea what their portion of paving their street might cost. So I, so I think that's valuable.
An, an example of that, like the bicentennial public water project that we have been working on, I think was the fourth time we've done that project in 10 years, looked into it. And each time, we started from scratch. So that's kind of an example of what we're trying to avoid. So I'm looking up city engineer records from 10 years ago and basically repeating everything that was done.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I move we approve work order 21-02 with Professional Engineering Consultants, PA, Wichita, Kansas, for engineering services related to the Lakeview Heights Neighborhood Plan in the not to exceed amount of $12,150.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Public Works purchase 13-1 bucket truck.
Mr. Mayor and Council, this item is a unbudgeted item that I'm bringing for you tonight. It was in our five-year CIP and it's been in there for a few years. In doing a, a inventory of all of our equipment and assessment on the conditions of all those, we realized that it was due for a safety inspection. And once we did the safety inspection, we had some results that were less than promising and some, some, some concern. And so we have funds in our street equipment reserve fund that is in there. And part of that reserve fund is to respond to things like this from time to time that do come up. This piece of equipment is what we use when we have a traffic signal light that goes out or needs to be adjusted, or lens needs to be cleaned, or a lot of things happen to those traffic signals. In the North Park Heritage Sea, I'm going to get that wrong one of these days, I'm sure, Park, part of that was street lights that we will actually own and maintain, unlike all the others where Evergy has those, because we wanted to go with a little nicer style. We will use this vehicle to maintain those in the future also. We also use them for banners and for other things also. This piece of equipment, when we do need it, is very, very important to us. So we felt like to try to keep it in our CIP, which, because we pushed most of our CIP items due to COVID concerns the previous year, we pushed it from 22 to 23, I believe. due to COVID concerns the previous year, we pushed it from twenty-two to twenty-three, I believe, if my memory serves me right. So, we would be looking at twenty-twenty-three, and after we actually get these back and look at these delivery dates, it's phenomenal on some of those delivery dates. But, uh, even at that, it's gonna be six months before we can get this piece of equipment in. So, it'll be pretty much the end of the year. So, the, the specifications were written, kind of based, actually, it just so happens, around the, the low bidder. So, the staff is very familiar with that piece of equipment, and is happy with how the specifications, or how they met the specifications. They met all the required specifications, and the price point seemed to be pretty good. It's actually lower than what we anticipated before we started down this road of purchasing or trying to purchase this piece of equipment. If anyone has any questions, I'd be more than happy to try to answer those.
Rick, is this what we, we had talked about?
It is.
Is it the same one?
Correct.
One of the, the, the thoughts I had brought up at the time, and maybe it's unnecessary, was perhaps since it's such a large number, and we're looking at a sales tax question. In the past, we've passed, or we, we've asked for three items normally. And this is one that, that I'd recommend for that, unless there's something else that is more important that you've already thought of, um, or if you'd rather not wait, then...
I, I would rather not wait. This has some safety concerns that, um, we're only gonna use this piece of equipment if we are authorized to purchase it until delivery in emergency situations. We're, we're going to withhold from that. And it's actually one intersection where we will have to just outsource and try to get a contractor in here. Contractors do not respond as fast as we do. So, there can be some delays on one particular traffic signal due to an overhead power line in the area.
Okay. On that note, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the purchase of a bucket truck in the not-to-exceed amount of eighty-seven thousand six hundred and fifty-one dollars and twelve cents from Equipment Technology LLC out of Oklahoma City.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion carries six-zero.
Mr. Mayor?
City Code update Article eight dash one-oh-two, appointment date for health board.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. If I can make one comment before I do sit down. As far as the update on the Heritage Park that was brought up earlier, I do put those in my staff memo every two weeks, and I will make sure to put a more detailed, um, status of that park project to keep you posted. But I try to keep all the par, all the public work projects that I'm overseeing updated in our staff memo too, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we've gone through a couple of these this year, and I apologize that I didn't get them caught all at the same time. But this is just in that continued effort, we do our appointments. State legislator change, legislature changed when city elections were starting in twenty, when you took office in twenty-twenty. And that shifted our calendar from an April election to a November election. And so, we just have a couple of different appointments that we needed to go in and clean up so that they all now get appointed at the same time. So, the one before you tonight is for your health board, and it simply moves it to the second meeting in January, like the rest of the appointments. No change to the rest of the, um, resolution or ordinance setting this authority.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt ordinance amending Chapter eight, Article one, Section eight dash one-oh-two of the Code of the City of Andover, Kansas, providing advised annual date for the Board of Health members to be appointed.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion carries six-zero. Bank signatures fifteen-one, resolution designated bank signature. And Donna's gonna speak with us about that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, this is kind of a housekeeping duty also. Now that Tabi Nazad is our new accounting, budget and accounting manager, and with Julie leaving, we're adding his name to the bank signature card for signing checks and removing Julie's. And we'll need the council president to sign off on this, since you're one of the signatures.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt a resolution designate Equity Bank as the depository of city funds, and authorize the mayor and designate staff members as signatories, and authorize Council President Tabor to sign.
Second. Second. Sorry.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six-zero, fifteen-two, resolution safety deposit box access.
The city does have a safe deposit box at Equity Bank, and currently, um, Julie's signature is also on that, so we're replacing it with Tabi's signature.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt a resolution for authorization to be given for safety deposit box when signed on behalf of the city by any one of the designated staff, and auth, authorize the mayor to sign?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Motion carries six-zero, mayoral appointments, Andover Road Business Improvement Grant Selection Committee.
Mr. Mayor, Council, this is the fifth year for the Andover Road Business Improvement Grant Program. Application deadline is April thirtieth, so three days. Uh, we are expecting, we have had some preliminary meetings with a couple potential applicants for that program. So, we are anticipating applications this year. Traditionally, how this works, um, the way that the program is set up, is the mayor, with consent of the governor, or of the city council, appoints us, uh, a selection committee. That selection committee reviews each application, scores those applications, and then forwards the recommendations to fund applicants to the entire governing body. So, the body that's being presented, the committee that's being presented this evening, scores and recommends, you actually approve as a governing body the actual awards. So, again, traditionally, this has taken the form of the city administrator, two city council members, and two members from the indoor Chamber of Commerce. So, we've kept that same format, where it's the city administrator, two council members. Except for this year, it is one Chamber of Commerce member.
Any questions about the committee or the program in general, I can answer.
What are some of the, oh, Mr. Mayor?
Pardon me?
Just a quick question.
Excuse me. Oh, yeah, yes, I'm sorry.
That's fine. What are some of the big projects that, that this has helped out?
Jenny, I'm gonna ask for an assist on that.
No problem. Um, it's really gone a lot towards signage on Andover Road. So, Andover State Bakes Digital Sign was one of the purchases. Dr. Howell, a dentist on North Andover Road, did a digital sign. And those signs, um, if you're at all familiar with, I'm sure those of you that remember approving the amphitheater screens out here, they're, they're really large, but those are pretty costly investments for small businesses, so that's been very helpful. Rusted Rooster, um, used a grant to help pay for their landscaping, and they did that last year. Trying to think, any, um, Dr. Howell's group actually applied and was awarded multiple years in a row. They did fencing, um, because they have this lot adjacent to them as well, and they did work in their, um, parking lot as well.
Nice. Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to approve the mayoral appointments of Jennifer McCoslin, Homer Henry, Shelby Carso, Carso Way? Did I say it right?
Yes.
Carso Way, and David North to the Andover Road Business Improvement Grant Selection Committee.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries six-zero, sixteen-two, mayoral appointments.
Since I'm already up here. Since I'm already up here.
Yeah.
There is a vacancy on the library board. You're, uh, two vacancies, actually. Um, your direct, your library director has worked with the mayor on recruiting for the vacancies. For your consideration tonight as a mayoral appointment to one of those positions, I believe they are still recruiting the second vacancy.
That's correct.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the appointment to the library board as presented by the library board.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries six-zero.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
And I don't know if this would be a question for Lance or Dr. Ford, and maybe I'm not ans, asking the right question, Jenny, but, so we have another appointment that's open. Do they need help recruiting for that, or is that decision just in the works?
The last discussion I had with some of this is they had a few people they wanted to invite first, and they were waiting for an application. That was my last word.
And what I was gonna say, because I, I didn't have that information, so I'm really glad you did. I just was thinking from a details point of view, you might be going, but we're working really hard to get all these appointments to the second meeting in January. But this one is set by state statute, that it gets appointed in April. So, I don't know if that will change, but that's why we do this one in April.
That was my next question. Thanks, Jenny.
All right, member items.
I got, I got one really huge one. Uh, my son is coming home for, uh, from Air Force Engineering, and, uh, he's been gone for six months. We hadn't seen him. And, um, so we're happy to have him home tomorrow afternoon. And, uh, he, uh, a little bragging, he, uh, graduated in the top of his engineering class, so that was pretty cool.
Wow.
And I'm sure his, uh, math teachers at Andover Central would be shocked. So, um, so, yeah, super happy with that, and we can't wait for him to be home tomorrow night. Second thing, uh, disc golf course has been booming like crazy. People have been out, uh, on nearly every single hole, um, nearly all the time. Troy and I played a couple times last week, and it was nice to see so many people out and, and hearing their stories and, uh, you know, some ideas and, you know, uh, how about we do this? Or, um, you know, can we add this? Or, uh, or what they didn't like too, which is, you know, great to hear that. And, uh, but, uh, you know, we talked to so many people, uh, as we were going. And, uh, a lot of res, you know, Andover residents that were like, finally, we got a course here in town that we can go to instead of going to Wichita. So, it was great to hear all those great stories, and, and we got a list. So, um, we'll, uh, pass that list off to the Parks Department and see if they can adjust things as we go.
Yeah, it was exciting to see them all out there, wasn't it? By the way, that's a great opportunity. I think Ronnie had brought it before. Disc golf sells, or, you know, some kind of, uh, business to, to take advantage of that. Yep. Mr. Mayor? Anybody?
Mike, congratulations on having your, uh, son come back to town. And then, thanks, staff, I mean, uh, for putting on that memorial yesterday. I, I know there was, uh, I believe a committee also that did it, um, so thanks to them. I took a moment this morning to, to watch the video, um, from that, and that was pretty, uh, you know, I, just remarkable to see, you know, what can happen in the matter of a few minutes that none of us have control over. But what we do after, you know, we have control, and so just keep that in mind. But I just appreciate all you guys. Thanks.
Yeah, I did, I did have one. Uh, I don't know if, I'm sure everyone saw that there's stuff going on right now in the amphitheater. They're currently working on setting up for the Music Theater of Wichita's, uh, Smokey Joe's Cafe. And, uh, so that's pretty exciting, and it starts tomorrow, right? Maybe they're doing a run-through tonight, so if you all wanted to walk out and see what's going on. But it sounds like it might rain tomorrow, right? So, if that does happen, there's contingency, and I'm, I'm told May the second is when it would, it would happen in case it didn't tomorrow. But I think it's gonna happen on the weekends, or is it every day between now?
It is every day between, uh, Wednesday through Saturday. And I do have a note here from Katie that they will make the decision on a rain call by 5:00 PM tomorrow. So, for those who might have tickets or be planning to go out, they will make the decision and publicize that before 5:00 PM tomorrow.
Very good. Hope to see everyone there.
Tim, you have anything?
I do. I just want to reach out and let, uh, everybody know that the, uh, uh, school district was chosen by the, uh, Andover Fire and Rescue, uh, Committee as a community service award for twenty-twenty. Superintendent Brett White got his, uh, chief, what is that, is a, do we call that award? What do we call that? Just an award, or is there a name to it? Okay, so, uh, Superintendent Brett White received the award and was extremely happy, and he reached out to me and, uh, sent me an email and said thank you and all that good stuff. So, uh, it's very exciting, uh, for that, so, um, that's all I got, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So, so I'm kind of perplexed. Governing body, you can help me with this. How do we decide as a governing body what we wanna dig our heels in on having three bids? What, what is it? Uh, for example, if I refresh my memory, did we not just have one bid on the aforementioned disc golf course? Yes, no, maybe anybody? How do, how, how do we decide?
There were several.
So, since I've been elected, and I was mayor-elect, I've watched our fire chief get bludgeoned because of, because of lack of enough bids. I watched this gen, I didn't, tonight, I'm assuming this gentleman went through quite a deal because he didn't have enough bids. But when, it seems that when a member of the governing body associate only has to put in one bid, and that's really disturbing to me, because that's not the way you serve a community. You know what I mean? So, what is the, what is the criteria that you absolutely have to have multiple bids? Because going forward, we're gonna live by that standard. So, so it's either you have to have three bids, or you don't have to have three bids. But you gotta be consistent if you're gonna be, if you're gonna, if you're gonna, if you're gonna stand up for the people of this community, if you're gonna represent the people of this community, then you have to be consistent in your stance. Period. I hope I never have to veto anything, but if we're not gonna be consistent, then we're gonna, then there's gonna be issues going forward. You know what I mean? Period. We either have to have three bids, what is it, three bids? Two bids? One bid?
Competitive.
Six bids?
Competitive.
We didn't have competitive bids for your disc golf course.
We did.
Yeah, there was.
Yeah, it was.
No, we didn't. Nope.
It, it, it was, well, that's besides the point of what we're talking about. We had a special meeting. Did we not have a special meeting on the landscaping? Yes or no?
You don't, don't, you're not asking me questions. I'm telling you, as a governing body, the last time I looked, I'm the mayor.
Okay.
You served to the council, though. That's not a fair statement.
But you can't have it both ways. You're either gonna get consistent with the bids.
We had a special, we had a special meeting.
Michael, Mike, you raided our fireman twice since I've been elected, because he didn't have enough bids to suit you. One of it, your buddy didn't get the bid.
He was local. I mean, that adds extra points, isn't it?
No, that's not how it works. It's competitive bids, and your partner wasn't competitive. So, you've gotta decide how you wanna do it, period. We're, we're in a body, but how's it gonna be? Is it just when, what is it? What's the standard for this governing body to make a decision?
So, I guess the standard has been, and was tonight, that if, uh, we're gonna have a bid, or if we're gonna have, uh, a project that's gonna be completed that's tax, taxpayer-funded, that we have competitive bids. Competitive bids isn't the same for every project. Some, some places we might go out to, and literally, there's only one place that could possibly give us a bid at all. Some other things, like landscaping, there's probably fifty different landscapers around. So, it's not easy to just plug in a number. It's competitiveness. I understand what you're saying about how, um, maybe the fire department was, uh, beat up a little bit.
Not a little bit. Twice. Twice.
Twice.
Twice.
I, I get your point in a way, but I would also say that it's still our job to make sure that we're trying to do our best for, and, and the way that Mike thinks, is it the same way you think, is it the same way I think? Which is why we're a body and not a, not a mayor only.
So, so should my friend get special privileges because he's my associate or my friend? That's what I'm seeing happen. This is not the first time. This is the second time since I've been elected.
So, you're saying that because Mike questioned the, the point that one of the, the bids that came back for a fire, uh, apparatus, that the person that he happened to know didn't get the bid, and he was concerned for whatever reasons, none of us agreed with him, by the way, which is why we debated it, and it didn't hap- way, which is why we debated it, and it didn't happen.
I'm saying, why didn't, why don't we, what's the standard, do you have to have competitive bids or not, you know? I'm just saying what I see, this is what I see, and so I can say what I see because I have the mind to do that.
I think the mayor's question is more theoretical than it is legal, obviously, as a second-class city, you don't have to take bids, you have a procurement policy that requires you to take bids for certain kinds of projects, it exempts others like professionals and, and people where you've established a history or trust, I think the uniqueness tonight, if there is a uniqueness, is that they specifically asked not to take bids and instead talked to three people, and then, and then they were unable to persuade more than one to bid, so, so I think the mayor's point is theoretically appropriate, as a matter of fact, sometimes we're going to go through the competitive bid process and only get one bid, and, and that's because either there's only one bidder that can meet the timeline, or there's only one bidder that provides the product we want, or there's only one bidder that can fill our needs, and so, but I think the mayor's, I think the mayor's point is more theoretical than, than, than it is sort of our procurement policy, you haven't done anything outside your procurement policy, or I would tell you, I think that, I think that you, I think that you made an exception at the last meeting, and, and I think that's what caused the tension tonight, because with the exception, there was only one bid, but, I mean, if you, if you, if you go to the public and, and you invite everyone and you only get one bid, I just, I think that can happen, it is just unusual, quite frankly, and to the mayor's point that it has happened, and we've sort of been, we've sort of been pretty personal about it, so I, I, I would just tell you that, to answer your legal question, there's not a state law requirement, there is a policy of the city that you've adopted that you all can look at again, and it, it really wasn't that long ago that you revised it for procurement, and you could add a rule one way or the other, as far as what's required, I think the mayor's point is not a legal question, it's more of a theoretical question, which is what's, what's the consistency to the public, and I apologize, Mr. Mayor, if that wasn't helpful, I was just trying to fill in the blank.
Perfect, but that's my point, we're going to be fair, we're going to be equal, I do this for site plan, Lance can tell you, I wear him out all the time, everybody's going to be treated the same, if your friend comes with an inferior product and he don't get the bid, you don't get to bludgeon the city official, someone that's highly regarded in this community, you don't get to do it, it happened before I was in...
I don't think you get to tell us that if we have a problem with a bid, or with anything that we're doing as a city, we can't talk about it.
No, I didn't say that, Troy.
I swear to God, that's what you just said.
I did not, I said if it's an inferior product, you don't get to demoralize one of our city officials.
Fair.
Right?
Yeah, but you still get to talk about it if you feel like there's something outside of it.
I didn't say, I make everybody be consistent, Lance can tell you, I do it all the time, you know, I've had Jenny call, I've had, I've had people call on the car because they're inconsistent, because of good old boy stuff that happens, and it has happened, and it isn't going to happen on this governing body to the extent I can stop it.
Fair.
Either, either, you have to be consistent, you can't bludgeon somebody for not getting a three vote, three, three deals when they tried, when you didn't try to get three, you just picked one, so that's, that's all I have to say, and you're welcome to say whatever you want.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I mean, I guess I already said, you know, kind of my piece with it, that I was against not doing the competitive, you know, I wanted to have the competitive bid, right, so I guess I kind of thought I was odd man out when it came to tonight's bid, and we were in the same exact place where I thought we were going to be, and like I said, I took into account Tim's point of landscaping and that it, that it did look fair, and then the fact that it was an Andover company, I'll be honest with you, were my two kind of deciding factors to go ahead and say, and with this and keep this project rolling, but at the same time, you know, warn Mr. Gish that I don't want to see that happen again, and we'll want a competitive bid in the future, and none of this, I only want, or, you know, we're only going to request, you know, four people, because, you know, at this point, it's agricultural, right, in the seasons, next it's going to be my con, my concrete needs a certain amount of dry days to dry before the winter cures the concrete, you know, I mean, I see all these things kind of coming down, and I don't want to pigeonhole us this, but I also didn't want to push back, you know, this project because I can see where it would benefit the city, so.
I'll refresh your memory, last time Mr. Gish talked at this, at this, to this chamber, I alluded to that, that if you screw this up, it won't be easy to get through council last time, so I agree with you, I'm just asking for consistency, I won't tolerate good old boy stuff, ain't going to do it.
I do think that, I obviously can't speak for everybody, but I do think that as a whole, we do believe that the standard should be competitive bidding, but that there are always going to be exceptions to the rule, recently, I think it was the police department that we did have just one bid come back for a vehicle of some sort, a truck maybe, and we had a very long conversation about that because there was only one, I think tonight we had a very long conversation about there being one bid for the Heritage Project, so I think, I do think that we do our due diligence, and we do question when there's just one, and I just think there's always going to be exceptions, it's not a perfect...
But the two differences there were, the police vehicle, or I believe it was a fire truck, was put out for competitive bid and only one bid came back, this one, we said only four bids can go out, and only one bid came back.
Sure, but with, with the fire truck, we still had a conversation about if we should wait a whole nother year to bid it again, so we do have the conversations, and for me, that was an issue of safety, so I'm not going to vote for something to go through another competitive bid just for the sake of it.
Mind you, this is not about the night, tonight, this is about what I've observed as mayor of this community through the period of a year, that's what it's about, I want discussion, but I want fair discussion, I want fair rules, if it's a rule for one person, then it's a rule for every person, if we can't, if they can't get three bids, so be it, but I'm saying, sometimes we don't make an effort to get three bids, how do we decide that? We don't, we're here to represent the whole community, not our own, our own, our own things, our own projects, our own streets, you name it, you know, so I just, I'm just stating what I, what I've observed, and, and you can use it or not, it doesn't matter to me, but that's where I stand on it. And I do, regardless, I'm not angry at you all, I'm just saying this is what I've observed, and I do have the utmost respect for you all and what you do, but, 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 poor Lance, he gets beat up all the time, because I get a phone call today, I called on Lance twice, what's the problem, you know, what's, why is, why is it, why is it, why is it so hard to get this from here to there, you know what I mean, and we're working on it, but I'm going to work on every aspect of the city to see to it that we don't compromise our integrity while making processes easier for the everyday man to, to get things done, you know, so I'll stop now.
I would like to reach out, Susan, or, did you do this?
Mr. Chastity did.
Thank you.
For Public Works, for the Public Service Recognition Week, since you guys don't have a meeting next week, I wanted to go ahead and get those to you guys, to our public servants.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
I love it when you second.
Any further discussion? Sure? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. Thank you all for your time.
You are very welcome.
Did you get a bottle of milk?
Uh, man.
Cough syrup or something?
Sometimes I sound angry, I'm not, man.